... meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held September 6, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And let's have our deputy clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Holes?
Here.
Councilmember Carratt?
President.
Councilmember Matthews is absent. Councilmember Weldon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Here.
And Mayor Olensky?
Here. Thank you. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summer unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. And council members, do we have anything to share? Sure, please.
I attended the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Conference last week with Mr. Corbin and Councilmember Carratt. And I just want to let everybody know that at the next Cottonwood Community Awareness Group meeting, the three of us will be there to go over with the community what we learned at this conference. So anybody who's interested in finding out more about what we learned, that meeting is Thursday, September 22 at 4:00 PM at the Cottonwood Library.
Great, thank you. Any other council members? Okay, just real quick, I want to remind folks again, like I promised I would, there's going to be a dinner fundraiser for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition that takes place October 8th over here across the street at the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse. It's a great opportunity to get some good food. It's going to be tacos. Just spoiler alert, it's going to be good food. Tacos, local craft beer, wine. We're going to have sangre. There's going to be a DJ with music. It's the annual fundraiser for the homeless coalition. I sit on the board. It's an important, an important thing in our community to support our homeless. So I'd really appreciate if you all would go out and buy a ticket, a dinner ticket. You can get tickets from the website, verdivalleyhomelesscoalition.org, and I hope to see you there. We're going to have some high-profile elected officials as well, so not going to reveal any names, but if you want to rub some elbows, it's a good opportunity to do that. So again, October 8th, Saturday evening, right across the street over there. So I hope to see you. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So by high caliber, highfalutin, are you talking about like the mayor?
No, even above.
Even above the mayor? Well, very nice. All right, Mr. Mayor, council, don't forget to sign up for the next blood drive hosted by the City of Cottonwood. It'll be on September 12th from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Public Safety Multipurpose Room located at 199 South 6th Street in Cottonwood. Sign up online at redcrossblood.org or via the Blood Donor app using the sponsor code COTTONWOODAZ. Or call 800 RED CROSS to make your appointment. The Cottonwood Fire Department invites you to join the 9/11 Remembrance Walk to honor the 412 public safety personnel who sacrificed their lives that day. Community members are invited to participate alongside our public safety staff. No registration is required. The walk will take place on Sunday, September 11th from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM at the Mingus Union High School Outdoor Track. Please wear appropriate clothing, footwear, and bring water. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be holding a special meeting on Thursday, September 8th at 6:00 PM here in the chambers. The Cottonwood Airport Commission Regular Meeting on Wednesday, September 7th has been canceled. The next meeting will be Wednesday, October 5th. Old Town Music and the Market is happening every Friday during the month of September, except September 16th because that's our Thunder Valley Rally, at the Old Town Activity Park at 187 East Pima Street from 5:00 PM until dark. Please visit Old Town Musician, no, Music and the Market org for more information. Go to Parks and Rec website, has all the bands there. We had a great turnout last week, by the way. The City of Cottonwood currently has one seat open for the Historic Preservation Commission and two seats open for the Board of Adjustment. Please visit our website, cottonwoodaz.gov for more information on how to apply. September is Library Card Sign-up Month, and the Cottonwood Public Library invites you to get your library card today. You can stop by the library and register in person, or go to the website at ctwpl.info and register online. Get your free ticket to exploration now at the Cottonwood Public Library. And then also wanted to remind council and the public, we're having a special joint work session on Tuesday, September 13th, our next work session. It'll be at the REC Center and it'll start at 5:30. So that'll be a joint session with P&amp;Z, but next Tuesday is at our REC Center.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, if there's nothing else, we're going to move on to call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. And comments are limited, comments are limited to a three-minute time period. So there's yellow forms in the back. If there's anyone here that would like to address the council for an item that we're not going to discuss on the agenda, your time is now. Is there anyone out there that wants to discuss with council an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. And for everyone else who is here for an item that is on the agenda, which is a full house, standing room only, if you do wish to speak, there's yellow forms back there. So sometime between now and the time that we discuss your item, please fill out a form and hand it up here. We'll make sure you get an opportunity to come up and address the council. All right, we're going to close the floor then and move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 16th, 2022, which I approve, or excuse me, which I motioned to approve.
Second.
All right. I made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, they are approved. Okay, and then unfinished business, two items this evening under unfinished business. First up is ordinance number 717, amending the zoning ordinance to allow six-foot walls and fences within the required front yard setback in residential zoning districts under a conditional use permit and with certain additional restrictions. This is the second and final reading. Counsel, anything else to add on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council, we received no other comments or public input or questions. So Scott is in the back if you, if you do have questions.
Okay. No, no questions. I think we went over it at length, so I guess I will go ahead and make a motion then to approve ordinance number 717.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Weldon seconded it. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holes?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, ordinance passes. Let's have our deputy clerk read ordinance number 717 by title only, please.
Ordinance number 717, an ordinance of the Maran City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending section 404 general provisions, letter J, walls and fences.
Great, thank you. Second item under unfinished business is the tri-party letter of intent for the collection and treatment of wastewater for the proposed 89 and Vine Development at the intersection of 89A and Cornville Road. Evening.
Good evening. My name is Tom Whitmer. I'm the Utilities Director for the City of Cottonwood. As many of you may recall, at the last council meeting, we brought to you this, this letter of intent between the three parties, three parties being the City of Cottonwood, Sunbelt Holdings, and Verde Santa Fe Wastewater. There was some concern expressed at the initial draft of this letter of intent that we might be losing a valuable resource. In other words, we didn't want to throw in the towel and just give up the opportunity to potentially take advantage of reclaimed water at some point in time in the future. If you remember this, this letter of intent is a letter of intent between the three parties. It basically agrees to the concept that all the wastewater that would be generated by the 89, the 89 Vine Development would be transported via collection systems down to the Verde Santa Fe Wastewater, and it would be their responsibility to treat and dispose of that water, that reclaimed water, I should say. If you may recall, right now, as we expressed the last time, there was an agreement already in place that the golf course has an agreement between the wastewater treatment plant to currently take everything that's produced by the wastewater treatment plant. With the addition of the 89 Vine Development, however, as you would expect, the amount of effluent that they would be treating would be significantly more than what they're currently treating. And as such, there were some thoughts at some point in time during the, during the year that there might be some reclaimed water available for reuse by the city. We want to make sure that we took advantage of that. So in this new draft of it, what we did is, first of all, the three parties recognized the value of that reclaimed water, which is very important. That resource in and of itself is a resource that, once you own it, nobody can take it away from you, such like you can with surface water or groundwater in some cases. So it makes that original, how should I say, it makes that original recognition that there is value to that, and that all three parties agree to it. It also further goes on to state that there will be agreements that will be needed beyond this letter of intent. This letter of intent isn't a binding contract of any sorts, but it does recognize that there will be contracts that will be drafted in the future between the city and Verde, Verde Santa Fe Wastewater, and also Verde Santa Fe, or the city and Sunbelt Holdings. And as such, we wanted to ensure that, one of the things that we pointed out in this letter of intent is that there would be an agreement between the city and Verde Santa Fe Wastewater, such that any available reclaimed water in the future, this would address it in a formalized form of a contract that would allow us to have access to that, to any unused and available reclaimed water in the future. Tonight, I have Sunbelt Holdings here tonight, Sean Walters and Bob Bambauer, and I also have Jason Williamson from Verde Santa Fe Wastewater. If you have any questions you'd like to address him, I'm sure they'd be happy to come up.
Okay, very good. Counsel, any questions at this time for staff? For Mr. Whitmer? Okay. Would we care to have the representative, Mr., is it Walters from Sunbelt Holdings?
Sean Walters from Sunbelt Holdings and Jason Williamson for Verde Santa Fe Wastewater.
Great. If you wouldn't mind, let's call the both of you up, and I really appreciate you, you coming down today. I understand one of you came down from Colorado, so welcome to Arizona. It's a little hot today.
Yes.
Appreciate you being here, though, both of you. And I appreciate you pausing on this as, as we were able to kind of, I think, fine-tune the letter of intent, as you can understand the effluence of great importance to Cottonwood. We really feel like it secures our water future, so we appreciate you kind of drafting that into this letter of intent. Is there anything that you'd want to share with us at this time?
Mayor Olensky, members of the council, my name is Sean Walters with Sunbelt Holdings, address is 6720 North Scottsdale Road in Scottsdale. I just want to say again, thank you for the opportunity to present last time. I appreciate it. We very much appreciate getting the feedback from you, and appreciate the opportunity to go back and get a chance to rework with, with Tom and Ron and work through this process. I think last time, when some comments came up about Verde Santa Fe Wastewater, I said I didn't feel comfortable representing on behalf of Jason. So we invited him to come down as well, just so that we'd have the opportunity to all talk about it. But I think, again, I want to just say thanks to the city and thanks to Jace. I think this is a collaborative solution, a unique and creative solution to a problem that should help the entire kind of water situation in, in the City of Cottonwood, right? So, so I, again, thanks to the parties for joining together with us to push this forward, and I appreciate the feedback and the support from the city.
Great, thank you. Mr. Williamson?
Mayor, council, thanks for inviting me. And I would just say that, yeah, we're, I operate a number of wastewater and water utilities in the state of Arizona, and reclaimed water is a huge issue on all of our systems, and we're fully supportive of, and understand the interest of maintaining that right. So to the extent that we're allowed to by the Corporation Commission, which is our governing authority, you know, we certainly will make that happen to the extent possible.
Okay. Any, any questions for these two gentlemen?
Would you mind recapping what was presented last week? I mean, minor recap, and then the difference between this letter of intent?
Sure. Mayor Olensky, Councilmember Weldon. So basically, what we've done is we've put together an agreement where the property that's in the City of Cottonwood at the northeast corner of 89A in Cornville, would, instead of building a wastewater treatment plant that kind of duplicates what's going on at Verde Santa Fe, the Verde Santa Fe plant was originally designed and permitted to handle the proper, the wastewater flows from both properties. What we would do, that was before the, the property north of Cornville was annexed into the city. So basically, what this would do was create a bulk service agreement between the city and Verde Santa Fe Wastewater that would allow those wastewater flows to come down and be treated. What Sunbelt would be doing is working with the, with Verde Santa Fe Wastewater Company to upgrade the plant in capacity and also quality of effluent. So currently, it operates at a B-plus quality of effluent. We would be kind of replacing, upgrading the system with a system that treats the A-plus quality, and it would be expanded to take the flows from the, the property north, the 89, 89 Vine Property, it's currently called. And then that effluent would then be utilized on the golf course. Currently, the golf course uses a combination of, of effluent from the plant and also groundwater off of a well that is on the course property. So, excuse me, the additional effluent generated by the plant would offset the need for some amount of that groundwater that's being used. And then ultimately, at certain times of the year, I think as build-out occurs at the 89 Vine Property, there's probably excess effluent that's generated. And that was kind of the genesis of the conversation last meeting, was that what do we do with that excess effluent? And I think we've talked about putting an agreement together where then we would just deliver that, have that effluent available to the city to utilize for, for other uses. How do I do it?
Perfect.
Okay. So three-party agreement to do that.
Okay. It certainly strikes at what was most important to me, which was to make sure that the City of Cottonwood doesn't pump our, our resource out of the city to another facility entirely. So I think, at least from my perspective, this, this seems like a good agreement. Any other thoughts from council?
I did want to just comment briefly and thank both Mr. Williamson and Mr. Walters for being here tonight and just really addressing, as good partners to this agreement, the city's concerns. I still do have reservations, and I understand this is just a letter of intent, and it's not binding. But again, the, the city is, is passing, or we're not taking on the short-term infrastructure costs, but we are potentially waiving important rights to a very valuable future resource in the form of the effluent. So making sure that we do have good, good partners, so to speak, in this endeavor moving forward, especially with past historic management concerns of your company in the community, Mr. Williamson, and then some of the stops and starts with this development itself. So just the fact that both of you are present again tonight and were willing to work with us and your council on this additional term, so that the parties' interests and our city goals, at least as stated at the last meeting, are addressed in this letter of intent. So thank you both.
Thank you.
And to Tom, Tom as well, not to leave you out, sorry.
All right. Anything else, council? Okay. Again, again, just your, your patience too and giving us this three-week pause. Thank you very much.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Yes, please.
I move to approve the proposed letter of intent pertaining to the collection and treatment of wastewater produced by the proposed 89 and Vine Development.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion made by Councilmember Weldon and Councilmember Holes seconded it. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holes?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Right, very good. Thank you. All right, let's go into new business then. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. First up is ordinance number 721, approving a new updated schedule of rates, fees, charges for the Cottonwood Municipal Airport. This is just the first reading. Mr. Tripp?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Jeff Tripp, Airport Manager. Now, do you want me to read the motion out, or I haven't done one in the city before, so?
I'm sorry.
Would you like me to proceed on this? Does this, I read the ordinance out, or?
Yeah, you can just give your, your presentation and the highlights, and then?
It's not, I'm sorry, you don't have to read the motion. You just explain to council.
Okay. All right, Mayor, council. Okay, this is, you know, the airport is looking to update our airport rates and fees. As we mentioned in the previous meeting, we're taking the rates and fees from our airport minimum standards, our leases and various policies, just getting us into a more comprehensive and complete document. We're also taking a look at establishing some new rates and fees that we've not been charging for things such as overnight parking for transit aircraft, and modifying several of the fees to include the self-fueling permit program, based upon input received from the tenants as well as council.
Okay. And when we discussed this last, we had a couple of concerns about some, some rates that maybe we wanted to make sure were in line with other municipal airports in the area. Can you address that?
Correct. I did take a look at Councilmember Henry's questions about the self-fueling permits. I did look at some of the other airports, you know, Flagstaff, Prescott, Williams, Seligman, Sedona. The challenge we have is that each airport is a little bit different. For example, the Flagstaff and Prescott airports, as commercial airports, will typically tend to have higher fees just because of the type of operation they do. The smaller airports either do not have those types of fees. The closest really is Sedona. And I think we were patterning our fuel program off of them when it was first established in 2017, so I have backed the fees down to the standard $100 fee limit that we also charge for all of our commercial operating permits at this time.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Tripp from council? No. Okay, is there anyone in the public? I didn't receive any notices, but, or forms, if anybody wants to address this particular item, now's your chance. No? Okay. All right, then I would entertain a motion. No, I'm sorry, first reading. So I'm going to entertain a motion in a couple of weeks. Thank you. But let's, let's say I'm on fire tonight. Let's have our clerk, our deputy clerk, read ordinance number 721 by title only, please.
Ordinance number 721, an ordinance of the Maran City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Cottonwood Municipal Airport rates, charges, and fees.
Thank you. All right. Up next, resolution number 3150, appointing members to the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. What I'm really doing is just giving you all a lesson on how not to run a meeting, okay, so?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm Jack Teal here, your Parks and Recreation Director. Tonight, I'm here to request consideration for appointment and reappointment to our Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission for our new members, as well as replacing myself with the much better, more improved Dana Dow as the adult liaison for the program. Here in attendance tonight, we've got four of our members. They are all repeat members this year, and we just had one of our new members who was here, but he had another thing he had to get to. But on behalf of our Youth Advisory Commission and our Parks and Recreation staff, we ask for the appointment of the individuals in your packet. We had six open seats this year, and by luck, we had six applications. So that was really nice. We were able to take everybody who wanted to be involved and get them involved in the program. So after a short review with the staff and our Human Resource Management Department, we went ahead and we recommended the appointment of all applicants for this year's youth commission.
Great. Counsel, any, any questions, comments? No? Well, there's a long tradition of great work behind all of you. The youth commission's been around for a while. You've done some great things in Cottonwood, so really appreciate you all stepping up. Yep. All right, let's, go ahead.
I move to approve resolution number 3150, appointing members to the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Carratt seconded it. Let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Holes?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Weldon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
And Nick Carey.
Great, very good. Let's have you read that resolution by title only, please.
Resolution, resolution number 3150, a resolution of the Maran City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing youth commission members and establishing their terms of office.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you. Okay, next is ordinance number 718, annexing into the city approximately six acres of land located at the northeast corner of State Route 89A and River Avenue pursuant to the provisions of ARS 9-471, and this is the first reading. Remind me of that.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm Gary Davis with Community Development, and I'll do a brief presentation, do a brief presentation on all three related items. We'll need separate motions on them, of course, but first item is the annexation itself. This is a River Avenue annexation. It consists of about six acres in total. It includes two state parks board parcels that are on the west side of the river, on the north side of State Route 89A, east of a small road called River Avenue. There's one parcel to the east that's almost off the map here that's on the other side of the, of the river. That's a privately-owned parcel. There are, for purposes of, of petition signatures, there are two potential signatories. One is the owner of the parcel across the river, and the other one is APS. They do not own real property in the area, but they do own taxable property according to the state, so they are eligible to sign. And we do have signatures from both of those private, private entities. We, the state parcels do not sign because they are not taxable property, so they're not represented in the petition. But all the, all the private interests are. The annexation area would include the River Avenue right-of-way, and that's a portion of some old right-of-ways that go through this old oasis subdivision. This annexation would only affect the River Avenue portion. That's in the, in the legal description, as well as the map here of the annexation. So it's only this portion of the River Avenue right-of-way that would go from a county right-of-way to the city. The annexation would not include 89A right-of-way or anything to the south, or anything that's not shown on this map. On the zoning adoption, proposing zoning of C2, city zone, on the area that's currently zoned County C23. C2 is a very comparable commercial zone to the County C23. State law, as you recall, requires that the city cannot adopt any zoning in a newly annexed area that has greater uses or density than the existing zoning in the county. In this case, these are very comparable zones. On the state land side, that's currently zoned R1L18 in the county, which is a single-family residential zone. Because these are publicly owned, we are proposing to go with the CF zone, which is community facility, and that's typical for parks, schools, that sort of thing, things that do not, so that this zone would not allow residential or commercial in that location. And the right-of-way that I mentioned, the River Avenue, the way we draw our zoning maps, we do not include right-of-way in our actual zone. So the right-of-way is not zoned. That's why the zoning area is actually approximately five acres instead of six acres. This River Avenue, even though it will be annexed, would not be, would not get a zone.
Mr. Davis, before you move on from that, just to be clear, the, what's, what you're proposing is CF zone, community facility zoning, that, that's what State Parks currently owns, that?
Yes. Those two parcels are the State Parks Board parcels.
Okay.
So the annexation process, we started out back in August of 2021 with a work session to discuss initiating the annexation of three areas. The city filed blank petitions with the county on March 7th, which started a 30-day waiting period under state law for annexation procedure. April 5th, council held a public hearing to discuss the annexations. Petitions could go out after, after April 7th, which was the end of the 30-day waiting period. This is the only, this River Avenue annexation area is the only area that we received sufficient petition signatures to move forward with the ordinance. We filed, we signed petitions for this annexation area with the county on July 27th, scheduled this meeting, and that's where we are right now, the first reading of the annexation zoning ordinance and the 10-year plan. And then there would be a second reading on September 20th, and if it is approved, then annexation and the new zone- the new zoning ordinances would become effective 30 days after the adoption. On that tenure plan, the state requires that we adopt, that a city adopts a tenure plan for providing services and infrastructure. This is a very small area, so it's a fairly simple plan that's, that's in resolution 3149. The city would provide fire and police protection for those, those six acres. That River, River Avenue right-of-way would become city right-of-way from county right-of-way. Again, no state right-of-way goes into the city. There would be no extensions of water or sewer utilities in there. City does not plan to do any improvements on the River Avenue roadway. It currently is a dirt road that serves a few houses back on the area that's still in the county. That concludes our presentation on those three items. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Davis from counsel?
I don't really have a question so much as, I've gotten a lot of, I guess, questions from the public requesting clarification on the annexation area, as I'm sure you and my colleagues have as well. So I just want to make it very clear, because when we last spoke about the proposed annexations, there were three separate areas that were discussed at that time. So can you, and you, you did briefly touch tonight that this is the only one that's moving forward, but do you, can you potentially elaborate a little bit more on that and the reason, the petitions, the signing, et cetera? Just because, again, I've gotten a lot of, of communications from folks that thought the city was moving forward on all three of the areas that were discussed the last time.
Right, that, no, that's correct, Councilmember Henry, Mr. Mayor. The, this is the only one where we did get sufficient signatures to move forward. In this case, we get 100%. City is required to get signatures of at least 50% of the property owners represented by, by property valuation, and more than 50% by number of property owners. So the other two areas, one off of Frank Carroll Lane, one off of Cottonwood Street, Willow Tree Lane area, we have not received any, we've received a few petition signatures, but not sufficient enough to move forward with a, with this ordinance adoption.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, though, I want to be clear, we have until next year to bring those other two. So there is still plans to bring those forward if we get enough signatures. We just didn't want to wait the year since we already received the needed amount for this small annexation, and they are three separate annexations. So please understand that we may or may not come forward. We have a year for this to, to happen.
Right. And that will be triggered by us receiving the, the signatures?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. Now, staff at some point will send out reminders or reach out to the areas to make sure, see if they've changed their mind, because remember when we came forward, we had enough people wanting to annex? People change their mind, learn things, you know, all that, it's a very public process. So I can't imagine, I don't know when that will happen, but at some point, either in my tenure or afterwards, where staff will reach out to the other landowners to see where we're at. We just haven't done that yet.
Okay. Thank you, yeah. All right, any other questions for Mr. Davis? Okay. All right, well, I know we have some folks here this evening that have filled out a form. Everybody that came here this evening, you're more than welcome to speak. You took time out of your evening, so you may as well take this opportunity to address counsel, get your questions answered. The way this is going to work is I'm going to call you up in the order that I receive these, and if you have any questions, we'll take a note of it, and we'll get all your questions answered at the end. But you've got three minutes, just three minutes to address counsel. You can share your concerns, you can ask a question, and like I said, we'll, we'll get those questions answered. So let's bring up Mr., I believe this is Wayne Wright. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
I have questions.
Certainly, we won't answer them now, so just take your three minutes to ask your questions or address us.
Are they going to go on with the annexation there at, on the River Road across from Bates Road?
Is this your only question, sir?
Well, that's one of them.
Go ahead and ask all your questions, we'll take a note, and we'll get back to you at, at this meeting, but we're going to just go ahead and bring everybody up first.
Okay.
Yep.
I was born here in 1950. I've lived on that river. My backyard is that river. Has anybody crapped in your backyard? Has anybody crapped in your backyard? You don't want to answer. They have in my backyard. And I, I want to say this, if, who, who, who runs the show down there? And if, I just saw where they're not going to put any toilets there. So are they going to put toilets at intervals down the river if these kayakers are going to start going down the river? And who's going to make the money off of that? Who's going to do it? I hope somebody can tell me. Because I don't really appreciate what goes on in that river. I saw that river bottom when it was like a park. It's like a dump. How many of you have been on that river bottom? I've lived on it. My backyard is the bottom of that river, and I don't think this should be done. And there's a lot of people, Bates Road, on Bates Road that don't, and there are other people that aren't even on Bates Road that don't think it should be done. And I believe, well, I just believe. I lived here all my life. I've lived here, the three years that I wasn't here, I was in the Army. I believe in that flag. But I have to stand up for what I believe in, and one thing is to keep people that come up from Phoenix and all over the place off that river. Somebody's making money off of it. I want to know if the city's doing it. I want to know why the city even is thinking about getting it. Because the city never owned it. And I want to know, did, the South Koreans, I think, owned that? Nobody wants to answer, do they? But I, didn't the South Koreans own that area right there?
Sir, to be clear, we're going to, we're going to take all the questions. This isn't meant to be a conversation. You've got three minutes to address counsel, and then we're going to answer the questions at the end.
Well, I guess that's where I'm at with it. I don't think it should happen. I mean, they've been, they've got places up around Parkdale to do it, and they, they run down Black Canyon and go down to the winery and all that. Why do they have to have that place? I just don't see it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, appreciate you being here. Next, we have Elektra Young. And I'm sorry if I'm not getting the names right. Good evening.
Good evening, counsel, and thank you very much for allowing this dissertation. Briefly, I have questions. I'm Elektra Young, I live on Willow Tree Lane. I was in opposition to the Willow Tree Lane annexation, I still am, to all three annexations, anything along the river. I am not in annexation to progress for this city. Perhaps that came across wrong last time? Cities progress. It's been a great job at city progress, but along the river? Consider this, this is preservation of wildlife. There's a stretch there along the ranches, along the greenbelt, and it's, the argument's been made April 5th, when we were first here five months ago for a public hearing. Then, that was done beautifully by Caleb and other wildlife kayak tour guides, and they said they would never recommend taking people down on kayaks, at least even four people at a time is too much for that river, for the wildlife, for the preservation. But beyond that, we're going to this area where my, and this is a flood zone area, I believe. So there's a great deal of development that has to be done here. This is no small feat, and it looks like it's just a couple of parcels and river access? What is that called? It's River Avenue. So my question here is, are they subdividing that parcel? River Avenue is a separate parcel from the state parks lands. It goes up to North Road, that is not highlighted, goes to North Road, all the way over to Mount Mingus, South Mount Mingus, and in the middle, it's bisected by Oasis. That parcel is four roads with people living amongst them in a density. None of them are aware of it. I've spent some time today making people aware that, is this parcel going to be subdivided? That's the question. And if so, why is this process moving forward with what appears to be a misrepresented map? It took me a while to find that, it is misrepresented. It's not an accurate mapping of what's to be obtained by the city, which is four-road parcel, not the in-between the roads. You'd have to see it, and I have maps of it. I took it straight off GIS, and it looks like an M, and it's, that's the parcel. And that parcel number is written at the top. I should, for, for accuracy, let you know what that is. It is 8017044V, and it's owned by Yavapai County Public Works. Are they a part of this annexation process so that you can have access to River Avenue? Or is it just taken and then addressed later? So there's many issues here of inaccuracies, of property, of parcels. Two petitions are signed, and that's called 100%, when 99% of the people not allowed to have a voice. They have a voice. I've, many of them I spoke to today, they are in opposition, strong opposition since 50 years. And these are the Monginis and the Mulcares and the Wayne Wright, the Rossettas. These are families that are strongly in opposition since before you were here. Consider that. You come and you go, and you do a hell of a job. This is a tough city. This is a difficult situation just for myself and my life. I can't imagine what you're going through, pushing through the kind of progress this city is shooting for. And what about my property? It's in direct line of fire after this annexation, which, counsel, please, you don't have to vote for this, you don't have to approve this, not right now. It doesn't need to have a go at this time. You have, I think her name is Kim Joy of the Sedona Korean parcel, signed her petition, and APS signed a petition, and that's enough to disrupt all these neighborhoods? It's not enough to go on, and everyone, actually, I know I have three minutes. What's, what's the deal here? What's going to happen? We heard from Ron Corbin, April 3rd, 2022, in the Verdi Independent, I looked it up today. One of the things I think we do better than county is helping state parks manage the land, referring to law enforcement and applying for state grants. So here we have state grants and the expense of law enforcement and city fire department. We already have Yavapai County Sheriff's Department and Verdi Valley Fire Department, and people themselves are managing that land. The other thing is Arizona State Parks and Trails wanted it, if they wanted it. The city could apply for a grant and try to develop it in partnership for a river access point, and it's the only location for a possibility. What kind of river access point? We say deep commercial, it's being rezoned. Is this where the city needs to go right now with what's coming down the line globally? And, and within the city itself, the homeless, and I appreciate that, Mayor Alinsky. Yeah, that's a fine area to be involved in, but there's so much hardship coming down. There's so many other issues. Oh, have we even discussed traffic? No. This is another area that's going to cause congestion, and that's another area of engineering to be addressed. I'm sure someone will, there will be answers to all this, and still, opposition to this annexation process will exist. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Thank you. Up, up next, we have Mr. Wilkerson, and there's two folks that filled this one out.
This is definitely a last name, so I just forgot.
Okay, sure. Good evening.
Good evening, hello, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Michael Wilkerson, my wife is Monica Mongini. One thing I'd like to start off by is, as you can generally hear from the public, is what is your plans? I think they're all right. There's bald eagles down on that river. Can I guarantee there's a nest on that six-acre parcel? No, I cannot, but they're all along there. I see them every day out my back window, because this gentleman over here said the two parties involved have been heard from, and I have an issue with that. If you look along here, like she said, there's not two parties involved. There's two parties that have voted on this. Why APS gets a vote? I mean, come on, guys, does APS, because they have power lines running through there, should they get a vote as to what happens to our property? Do you think APS lives right there or cares what happens to that property? Of course not. So take APS's vote out in your heart. I know by the law, you have to allow them to do it, but should they really get a vote? Why does APS, if that's the case, then do they get a vote on all of your guys' property? Because they have power boxes going to your house? So APS should not have a vote. So this would be a 50%, would be failing, because there's one private parcel over there that wants to be annexed in. And if this wasn't a long shot for something different, as you're making it seem, then just annex in the one private, the white horse, annex in that property, and no one would be sitting here complaining right now. We would be like, give us our river access, let it be state land, let it be good, take the private parcel and move on with life. You wouldn't be getting any opposition, because if that's what they want over there, allow them to. But take APS out in your heart. I know by law, they have to vote, but they should not have a vote, just because they have power lines running through there, and you guys get to tax them, they get a vote. Our property, my wife's family's property is catty-corner to this. What we see off of our property is exactly that property. So we are bordering technically at a catty-corner. We're on the, I guess, southwest corner of Bates and 89. So this gentleman said zoning in neighborhoods around them, that's what we're going to zone this as. Look at the map, there is no commercial there. Everything around that property is residential. There's no schools or parks or any of that, so if we're really going to zone it for what it is, it would be zoned residential, because everything around that is a home. So what are we wanting to put there? We don't know that, and that's why there's so much fear through these annexations, because no one knows what your plans are. And then you guys say there's no road maintenance? Well, then you can't provide fire and ambulance. Have any of you actually driven down that road? Because I can tell you, if I don't take my big lifted truck, I don't go down that road. It's about a two-and-a-half drop-off asphalt when you turn on River Road. You guys know that if you've driven it, and if you take your little Subaru or your Prius, you ain't coming out. So how's the fire truck and the ambulance getting down there if you're not doing road maintenance? So guess what, guys? If you don't do road maintenance, you're not doing fire and ambulance, because the county hasn't maintained it, I'll admit that, but we don't need the city coming in and maintaining it either, unless you want to give us a proposition of what you want to do with the land. You're going to keep it a nature reserve? You'll have my vote, but until we know what's going to be done with it, we're in complete opposition, and that's my wife's family, all the Monginis who own all the land to the southwest of there, me and all the neighbors that are on that petition that we signed. There's 30 people that don't want this. So the gentleman that says the two parties have been heard of, take APS out of there. What are they a party of? My power line is afraid they might see something out their window? Their power lines don't mean anything. They don't do anything. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. And Ms. Gray, you're up next.
Hi.
Evening.
Mayor and counsel. So the first thing that I was kind of worried about was that I hadn't heard anything. I mean, I work a job and I do, you know, I do a home life, and I hadn't heard anything about this. So I get on there and I Google it. I see one article in the Verdi Independent from April 3rd, and it basically stated that Mr. Corbin stated that annexation does not change ownership or use of the property. So we did, we were here before, and I don't know, I don't think all the same people were here, but we didn't want to be annexed. We all got together, the place was packed, and if it doesn't change anything, why are we, like, doing this again? I did, I was thinking, you know, like he was saying about the, everybody, I can see my parcel up there, the 14A, and I'm part of that, and I don't understand why I didn't even hear anything about it, until someone called me this morning and mentioned it to me, and I'm like, why are we doing this again? And so here we are again. Like he was saying, the road is unmaintained, so to think that fire and police is going to do something before the 10, and I was told by someone, nothing's going to happen for 10 years, so, but I'm, we might not all be here in 10 years, I think I'm going to be here in 10 years. I don't want to see it turn into a day-use area, and then like on Mingus, when you're parked, you can smell the outhouse, because my house is that close. I don't want it blowing, smelling all the kayakers and bicyclers' outhouse, you know? I don't want, the first thing you do when you can't park at a day-use area is go to the next street. That's my street. I don't want you parking on my street. So there's just so many things that, and there's so many people that are not those two people, which one is APS, which makes no sense, that are involved, that, I mean, you can see all those little people up there, and that's real people, not numbers. So it's something to think about, that there are a whole bunch of us that are opposed to this, and not just, not just the white horse and the big square there, there's a bunch of little squares, so, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ms. Gray. Is there anybody else out there this evening that would like to address counsel? Mr. Rosetta? But you will, I know you will. Thank you. Thank you.
Andy Rosetta, 625 South Mountain Mingus Road. I just have a couple of questions. My name was brought up earlier, and as you know, I testified against this here a couple of months ago. State law requires that you have at least half the taxable property and more than half of the property owners. APS is not a property owner. So I don't think you've met the, met the requirement of half the property owners. Yes, taxable, but the other half of that statute talks about property owners. And you only have really one property owner in there, private property owner. And, and that's the people who own the old white horse across the river. I'm all pro-private property rights, and if those folks want in, that's fine. But I know the state parks people, and there's been a lot of dialogue for months, months, and months with those folks, and they've remained neutral. And they know it's a very controversial issue. So I would ask that you would at least check into that matter. You don't have half of the property owners that have, that have signed the petition. APS is not a property owner. So with that, as I said, if, if you want to choose to move ahead, the folks that own property within the area that want to be a part of it, I don't have a problem with that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. All right, let's get some questions answered, then. Mr. Corbin, did you take?
Yeah, I did. Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I start? And then Gary or Mr. Ellis can chime in as needed, because I do know a couple that I'll need them to help with. And then, of course, Ms. Torgan can clarify any legal things. I want to start with that last one first, because it came up a couple of times. So it's taxable property, not necessarily real property. So first of all, these are state statutes. We don't get to alter it. We don't get to decide how it works, unfortunately. So we have to follow state statute to the T. So with APS, according to the rules, is part of the equation. So that's one property owner. The only other property owner that can sign a petition is the other, the commercial site. So that's the two. The other owner of the property is State Parks, and they remain neutral, and they're actually not allowed to sign because they don't pay property tax on their property to the county or any other organization. So they're not a taxable entity. So it's just the, the two entities. So that's 100%. If we took APS out, and I understand the argument, it makes sense to me, then we would have one property owner, and we would be at 100% still. Because it's not the number of lots, it's the number of taxable lots and property. And so we clearly have met that definition in this area. But then I'll start back up at the top if I can, Mr. Mayor, and go through. We are not doing the other annexations at this time, as I explained in the meeting, or earlier in the meeting. We'll move forward with that when we, when we have enough. They were asking about what we were going to do with the land. So I just want to clarify, the land will still belong to the landowners. So State Parks will still be the responsible party to develop that area if they want to develop that area. It is not, you'll never have commercial there. You'll never have housing in that area. So it's really up to State Parks to work with us if they want to do anything. So any pocket park or anything that may want to happen in the future will be at the, at the request of and in partnership with State Parks, not the city. We'll work with them to, to do what we need to do. But please know that the city does not become in charge of that land. State Parks will still be the responsible party, and I believe that their conservation is one of their top priorities, and so they'll do what they think is best for the land. So State Parks will still stay in charge of that, that property. So someone asked about toilets and kayaking and all that. We won't be involved in that unless the State Parks asks us to help with that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Mr. Corbin, if I could add something to that. Scott Ellis, Community Development Director. The State Parks could do what they want with the land now in the county versus the city. So if they chose to do any of these things that have been brought up, they don't need to be in the city to do that. They could do it in the county. So that kind of goes along with the ownership doesn't change.
And then, thank you, Mr. Ellis. The city's not making any money off, we don't have any commercial development or kayaking. None of that is going on. Nobody here is making that money there. The city will not own the river. I don't know who the owners are of the, the park. If you or Gary could explain why we're annexing that commercial piece, why we even considered that? Because there is a little story there that I think needs to be, the council needs to be reminded of.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, counsel, that particular parcel is part, that building there, that white horse building is referred to as the old restaurant that was there. It is partially in the county and partially in the city. That line cuts through that building. A few years ago, they came in for a building permit, and county told us to do it. They didn't want jurisdiction. So we took that over. Makes sense to bring it into the city, so we have full jurisdiction.
So it'll stay the commercial it is. None of the other areas will be developed commercial. One of the other questions was about the road itself and going around. And I think I saw a picture of that map that's been shared around the community. It's incorrect. So we're required by state law to annex right-of-way adjacent to what we're annexing. And, and either one of the gentlemen can go into more detail of that. So we're only annexing the part of that road that we're required to by state law when we do an annexation. Again, a county doesn't get a vote because it's not a taxable property. And we're not taking the whole parcel because we're only required to take in what we're required to take in to meet the annexation requirements. As far as access to the road, I have not been passed very far up that road all the way. But this council has been very generous, both to our fire department and our police department. We have a, both police and fire ATVs and field units. We don't just have the big engines. And also, the ambulance service is, the ambulance service is not part of the city. So some people think that, that we provide ambulance service. We do not. Verdi Valley Ambulance provides that. And however they're getting to the houses now is how they'll continue to get to the houses. It won't change access to that area. For our fire department or police department that might go closer to the river or down in that area, we have the equipment needed to, to provide for public safety. Both our fire chief is here, if council wanted to hear from them, and our, one of our police commanders, if they had a more specific question. But I'm not concerned in the least about access. We have the equipment to get there. The bald eagles, bald eagles, we're all very aware of that. It's, again, state park land. They'll close it off when it's not accessible. There are parts of the year that parts of the river is not accessible to human traffic. That'll continue. None of that changes. So that we'll continue to be respectful of our, of the nature. Again, I want to explain the 10-year plan. It doesn't mean that we, we couldn't improve the road in 10 years. But we have to make a commitment of what we are going to improve or not, what we have planned. And we currently have no plans. There are no plans on the books to improve the road, to put in a pocket park, to, there are no plans. Again, it'll really be up to our partners to help us to decide what to do. But that's why the 10-year plan is very blank and very generic, is we don't have any plans. Often when you annex, you make agreements, or you plan to improve roads, or, or do something. We don't have any of that with this annexation. And then the question about then why, it goes back to about three years ago, maybe almost four years ago now, when council asked me to look in ways to, for the city of Cottonwood to better connect with the river, to bring the river into our community better. Cottonwood, Cottonwood, the heart of Arizona wine country, very concerned about our environment, very concerned about providing opportunities for our community to learn about the river. We think people who learn about the river treat the river better, we're more respectful of our water and our natural resources. So council directed me years ago to, to start working on this, and this is where we're currently at. So there's no, in my opinion, this is my opinion, no evil motive. This is just us wanting to bring the river into the city boundaries to partner with State Parks and to be a part of nature. I think I got most of the questions. I may have missed one or two, but, Mr. Mayor, I'll let you.
There was a question about how notifications were sent out. Some folks felt like they didn't get notified directly by, by mail. Can you go over the statute that requires?
Yeah, so a couple of things. First of all, this isn't the public hearing. That was held, and that's when notifications went out. So there were no notifications sent out for this meeting. It's not required by state law, and it's not, not what we normally do.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, counsel, for annexations, that meeting that we had back in April, we notify property owners within the annexation area. We post the properties to be annexed. We publish notification in the newspaper. We send notification to the fire district. There is no requirement to notify adjacent property owners with letters like we do on a rezone. Those, again, come down from state statute. With a rezone, we notify within 300 feet of the property. Annexation, we notify within that boundary.
Okay. Okay. All right. You have another question, sir? So this really, and you can't speak from there, I'm sorry. This isn't really meant to be, it's not like a neighborhood meeting. We got this. Sir, what, go ahead and, and just, go ahead and, what's your question?
I had a question about the zoning, why we're going commercial, because he was talking about what's around it, and I was asking why, because it means a commercial when everything around it is residential.
Okay, so we're going to repeat the question so the, the camera can hear it, and then go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I thought I'd answer that. We'll try again. There's only one piece of property being zoned commercial, because it's already zoned that, and it's part of that building. That's a story I was trying to have Scott explain. So it's only that. Everything else will not be commercial.
Correct. That one right there is C2, because that's what we have in the city right now. And that is the closest zoning to the county right now. The CF zone is not commercial, it's community facility. That's what we try to apply to publicly-owned lands. Makes it easier for those entities to manage and do what the things they want to do, but doesn't allow somebody to just go right in there and start a commercial enterprise.
Okay. So to be clear, the, the parcel, the old white horse, which is split jurisdiction right now, if this were to go through, would be zoned closest to what the county was, which is C2 in the city. And it would be fully under city jurisdiction. It wouldn't be a split jurisdiction anymore, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Did that answer your question, sir? Okay, all right. All right. Counsel, let's, let's have some discussion here, given the questions that came up, and see where we want to go from here.
My only concern, if you want to call it a concern, is, is that, I know you were shaking your head, and I don't know if this is the opportunity to, because you'll be coming back. You'll be coming back, correct?
No doubt.
Okay, so is there a way we could?
My name's Electry Young.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, this, we don't usually interact directly with the public. You can allow it, I just want, you know, we'll be available. This is the first reading after the, the council meeting.
Councilmember Wilkerson, is your concern how will folks get notified of the next meeting?
Sorry, I just noticed they were shaking your head. So if, and it's not the opportune time to do that, because you will be coming back. So just, we want to make sure.
Yeah, and I mean, this is, and I've sat through a lot of annexation hearings, because there's certainly, let me just back up. Cottonwood, for as long as I've served anyway, which is 17 years now, doesn't have a policy of going out proactively and trying to annex different parcels of land or, or communities at all. It's, when we're approached, we've considered it in the past, at least as long as I've been here, maybe previous councils have done something differently. So of the three potential annexations that we saw here recently, last year or so, all, all three were, were precipitated by parcel owners coming to us, and then we considered it. So we figured what would work best, you know, grouping the parcels together. And when there's many public hearings, it's probably the most democratic process around. So everybody's, you know, notified. We have plenty of meetings like this, public hearings. And we've also had a policy to not annex anybody that doesn't want to be annexed. We, at least as long as I've been here, we, we haven't done so. So I, I kind of feel like the other two annexations that we discussed likely will fail, because I don't think we're going to get the signatures we need, because everybody participated in the democratic process by coming to these meetings, by not signing the petition. And so that, though it was instigated by well-meaning property owners that just wanted to be a part of the city, it likely won't go through. This one is, is different in that we've got 100% of the signatures required. We're not annexing anybody that doesn't want to be annexed. It does meet some of our goals as a council. I believe it meets some of the State Parks' goals as well. We've got, as you know, Dead Horse Ranch here in Cottonwood. We've partnered with them in amazing ways to keep that, that economic engine going in Cottonwood. We've managed their wastewater facility out there. We, we co-host events. I mean, we, we really are great partners with State Park, with Dead Horse Ranch, State Park. And I think that has put Cottonwood on the map as, as a conservation community, conservation-minded community, which I think aligns with many of the goals of the folks here who are concerned about the, the bald eagles and, and just the, the damage to the river. I think State Parks has done a good job at conserving their lands, and we want to be a partner with them. And, and to clean up the parcels, too. Because some of those, if you look at Jail Trail, you know, we did have a, a real issue down there with homelessness and, and homeless camps down there, and all the things that get left behind, as you can imagine. It was State Parks' land, but the city partnered with them, got down there. We have now a, a trail committee that goes down there, cleans it up on a regular basis. We have an officer that's assigned to walking the area. He's our community outreach officer. He speaks with the homeless community down there, gets them off the parcels, which gets the, the trash and the, the utensils and everything else out of that area. Makes it more safe for our visitors, mostly for our residents. These are, these are important things. So again, I think this, in this situation, we're still following the policy that we always have, which is not proactively trying to annex folks, but responding and not annexing anybody that doesn't choose to be annexed into the city of Cottonwood. Those are my, those are my thoughts. There's a fly trying to land on my head. Anyone else, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add, this is first reading. We will be back September 20. Every council member has their contact information on our website, and, and they can email either myself or the city clerk. And we make sure council gets all the information, but you can reach out to anybody. And then staff is also available well before that to answer any questions and to, I think, help clarify some of the misinformation out there.
Yeah, and regarding that, the misinformation, I, you know, we, I think we make ourselves very available to anyone. If you have questions, please reach out to our planning department or our manager or any council member. We'll make sure to get those questions answered. If you leave home tonight and you still have some questions, email us, either counsel or manager, we're going to get your questions answered. There isn't, there is not a plan to, for the city to run out and annex parts of the rural, unincorporated, unincorporated areas of the community. There just, there simply isn't. And I respect everybody that showed up tonight and saying you want your, your rural agricultural existence to remain, and we have no intention of, of taking that away from you. So again, appreciate you all being here, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. All right, with that, let's have our deputy clerk please read ordinance number 719 by title only.
719.
Wasn't it? Oh, I'm so sorry.
718.
An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, annexing certain territory contingents to the city limits of the city of Cottonwood being approximately six acres in size located at the northeast corner of State Route 89A and River Avenue pursuant to the provisions of ARS Section 9-471.
Great, thank you. All right, Mr. Ellis?
Mr. Mayor, we actually have, the last one is an actual resolution.
Okay.
You can table it if you, if that pleases you, or you can go ahead and vote on that tonight. That's the 10-year plan.
Can we put all?
We put all three items on there, but we can table it and we'll put it back on the next agenda with the other two items.
We...
Ordinance number 719 by title only.
Mr. Mayor and Council, that, you can do that, because the plan has to be adopted on or before the date you adopt the ordinance. And that's, Mr. Davis did a tremendous presentation. The one thing I'd add to that is the plan is to serve anticipated new development. So the amount of services and infrastructure the city has to plan to provide is based on anticipated development.
Okay, I understand that, but to be clear, what do we do with ordinance number 719? Do we still...
No, no, I'm sorry, item number five, resolution number 3149.
Right, but didn't we skip over item four?
Oh, you, no, you need to do that one, I apologize. Yes, you, it's first reading on that one as well, sir. I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Let's go there, and then we'll figure out what to do with the resolution. Mr. Ellis, take it away.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to get reorganized, too. I believe you're at number four, ordinance number 719?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that is the adoption of the proposed zoning here.
Right.
That we pointed out. So that parcel with the restaurant there would go to C2 within the city. State parks would go to CF. Those are the closest matching ones to the county. So again, that's the first reading for that one as well.
Any questions on that? All right, let's get this off our plate then, and have you read ordinance number 719 by title only.
Okay, ordinance number 719, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting city zoning in the River Avenue annexation area.
Great, thank you. Okay, now resolution number 3149. Approving a policy to provide appropriate levels of infrastructure and services to the proposed River Avenue annexation area. I'm fine with moving forward with this resolution tonight?
Pretty broad.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, let's just...
Mr. Mayor and Council, as long as we're on this, still on the subject of annexation, there's a question, I think, still dangling in the air about APS and why they were considered consultant. The statute starts with the presumption that it's the owners of real and personal property in a proposed annexation area that would be subject to, they wouldn't, because the city doesn't have a property tax, but they would be subject to taxation in the event of annexation, are the populations to be considered for, in the bottom number of the fraction that is one-half of both owners and valuation. So that's why APS is considered an owner for this purpose.
Okay. All right, any, anything to go over on the, on this resolution? I know you've kind of covered it all, so, any questions from council on this? Nope. All right, then, I'll motion to approve resolution number 3149?
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Halls?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Narin?
Yes.
And Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Great, thank you. Let's have you read that resolution by title only, please.
Resolution number 3149, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving a policy to provide appropriate levels of infrastructure and services to the proposed River Avenue annexation area.
Okay, thank you. All right, next and last is ordinance number 720, adopting new fees for the city's building and safety and planning and zoning divisions. First reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Ordinance 720 is adoption of new fees for community development. We brought this to you back in May of this year to a work session to go over a few fees. We got the direction to go ahead and move forward. One of them is the wayfinding and kiosk fees. Currently, we're using the existing sign fees for an initial charge to be placed on a wayfinding sign in up to three locations right now, on Main Street, in Old Town, if the business is not on Main Street. So the sign would be on Main Street, pointing down the street right now. We do have this one right here, across Main Street from us right now, on Pima, it's the Three Kings, Casbar, and, sorry, I don't remember exactly what they changed that name to. Current fee is $75. Again, that's for our existing sign code fee right now. We want to add an additional annual renewal fee of $25 if they go out of business, if they want to make changes, anything like that, we recoup some of those funds to get that done. It will be replaced if they don't pay that renewal fee, if they close or they no longer wish to have the sign, then we'll just take it down. Still have the parking up there, the charging station portion, the restroom portion. So again, that's an example of what we have right there. Other possible locations, we haven't been approached by it, but it is possible is going around the corner at Main and Balboa, and then down on the other corner by the jail, the old jail. We're also looking to have a kiosk installed in front of the clubhouse, similar to what's down at the Jail Trail. That kiosk down there with the map of Old Town, we're going to do one of those up on this end. Provide a map that we will place in there with business locations, we'll update it at least twice a year. If we determine it needs to be updated more than that, we can do so based on businesses coming to town, closing, what, whatever might happen. We are not going to charge businesses to be on that. What we will offer, if we have space available, is advertising. So we want to set a fee, if it's first come, first served, space is available, they can put an advertisement in that kiosk. We want to do $50 per business, and again, they'll all be included on that wayfinding map at no charge. It's just that they want the extra advertising in there. The next fee is a consultant fee for community development. We currently do not have one, consultant, third-party review. Some of our large projects where we outsource, get some legal assistance, engineering if we need it, various types of other services, we don't have the fee for that. Other departments have something similar, so we want to bring that online, asking for 100% of the cost of the consultant, third-party review. So whatever they would charge us, we then pass that on to the applicant. And then we have a temporary certificate of occupancy fee. If you remember, this one just kind of went in a little bit more in-depth. We get asked for a temporary certificate of occupancy, which means that just about all of the life safety issues are in place on a building, a new build, substantial reconstruction that requires a certificate of occupancy. We don't like giving a temporary. Yes, all the life safety issues are in place, but there's still, could be a lot, could be a little, of things that still need to be addressed to fully be in code and get that permanent certificate of occupancy. Problem we run into is when we issue those temporary ones, they're supposed to be for a set period of time, but we really don't have any teeth to enforce it, and we get kind of shunned, I guess you could say. What we're looking for is if somebody wants one, that they provide a bond or a deposit, it gives them that incentive to get it done. There would be a fee of $200 that's not refundable, but the bond would be based on the total amount to complete the project, which they would get back, if that makes sense. So, an initial fee of $200, non-refundable, but then an amount equal to what it would cost them to finish it. If they don't, then we can go in there, make sure it's done, and they forfeit that money. Sedona has that similar setup, but they haven't issued a TCO in over five years. They do it extreme emergencies. They just don't like to do it, because they've gotten burned too many times as well. And Camp Verde also has a fee for it. So we're looking to do something very similar.
Does Camp Verde have the bond requirement as well, or not?
I didn't see an actual bond requirement, just that they have a fee for it.
Okay.
I think Cody's still in the back. He might be able to answer that, but I think they just have the fee for it.
Okay.
But Sedona does have both, and it works out very well for them.
Okay. And then, you said we've issued maybe three TCOs annually? Is that...
It, yes and no, Mr. Mayor. I mean, for smaller ones, like a home or something like that, we probably issue quite a few of them. Larger, commercial projects, not a whole lot, but we have, in fact, issued one back in July for a substantial project. We do try to have faith in the contractors, in the business owners and the contractors, that they will get it done, but again, we don't have any teeth to force that if they choose not to. Cody, the question was, does Camp Verde have just a fee, or do they have the bond as well?
I believe they just have.
The fee, yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, yes, please.
Who's responsible for getting the bond? Is that the city or the owner?
For, we will, we will put in place the process to do it, what we're looking for, what's going to be required, probably look and see it, how Sedona has it done, work with our finance department to make sure, and our city attorney to make sure we have in place the proper procedures.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wildin, though, to be clear, though, the business is required to come up with a bond, the money to cover it, so...
Okay, so they have to go out and get the insurance for the bond themselves? That's what was my question.
Correct.
Okay.
And the city, I'm sorry, the city is, sorry fancy term, the obligee, but the party that's protected and benefited and can call the bond for events of non-performance.
So essentially, it's just like a security deposit. If they don't do what they're supposed to do in a timeframe, then we would use that to finish the job, but if they do do it, they get that back.
Correct.
I can imagine, you know, the benefits of that would be, you know, a change of ownership and the TCOs long, everyone's forgotten about it, and we come back later and find there's code violation that hasn't been completed or whatever, then the city would have some teeth to go in and get it complete, so that those safety violations are no more.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this also gives them that incentive to get everything done, so they don't even have to ask for it. Now, if they have to put that money up, they're more likely just to get it done and get their permanent CFO without having to go this route.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is a compromise coming to staff, because we issue TCOs now, but I agree with council or with staff, it's very hard to hold their feet to the fire once they can open their business. So the best example for me is Spring Hill Suites. So they had a pole in the side of their driveway that had to be removed, but they were waiting on a cable company to remove the cables before APS could move the pole, and we didn't want to delay their grand opening by weeks, I think it was probably a month that that pole was in the wrong place. And so, we didn't want to, it really wasn't Spring Hill's fault, you know, per se there, and so we gave them the TCO, they came compliant after the cables were moved. But it always makes us nervous, because the one thing we have is not issuing the occupancy, right? And so, most of our businesses are responsive and follow-through, but there have been two others that I remember where it was a struggle to get them to finish the list that they were required to finish, even though we were business-friendly and allowed them to open up at their desired time, because all of the life safety issues had been handled. But we still have many codes that aren't life safety but are important, and this just helps staff hold them accountable.
Okay. All right. Questions, Council? No? Okay. Yeah, I think you're on the right path, so let's bring it back for final reading.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's get our deputy clerk please read ordinance number 720 by title only.
Ordinance number 720, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting new fees for the city's building and safety and planning and zoning divisions.
Great, thanks. And I move we pay the claims adjustments.
I'll second, but I do want to just note for the record that if anybody else had sticker shock on this month's claims and adjustments, there are a couple of different entries that had multiple months combined on the claims and adjustments, so I do second that, noting that it is unusually large.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I move to adjourn.